Hey, welcome to Committee of the Whole, everyone. I am Rosalba Dominguez. I'm going to go ahead and read our following statement for our electronic meeting today. In accordance with the Governor and Utah Department of Health Phase Guidelines for General Public, Utah Leads Together and the Utah Legislature House Short Resolution 504, adopted on June 17, 2020, extending the state's emergency due to the infectiveness infectious disease COVID-19, novel coronavirus, I have determined that to protect the health and welfare of Murray citizens and in-person city council meeting, including attendance by the public and the city council is not practical or prudent. The Center of Disease Control states that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. As I say this, I have stuff coming out of my mouth. Considering the continued rise of COVID-19 case counts in Utah, meeting in an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. It is my intent to safeguard the lives of Murray residents, business owners, employees, and elected officials by meeting remotely through electronic means.
Oh, it's not me. Okay, so Rosalba's been locked out?
Just thank you. Sorry. We are going to go ahead and continue to item number one. So, item discussion, item number one will be introduction and discussion related to recent national and local events by Dale Cox. Do you want to go ahead and present Mike?
Yeah, dude, you locked up though, but you want to go ahead and finish reading? You locked up where it said the public may view the meeting via.
Oh, I am sorry for that. All right. So, round two. Let's see, the public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycity.com or via Facebook page with the Murray City Webpage on Facebook. So, there is no physical meeting location will be available today. If you would like to submit comments for citizen comment, time, or public hearing, you may. Can you hear me, see me now? Sorry. I think I had to switch my internet. I apologize. I have a household good. Okay, so I have it, I have it working now. I have a whole other internet. Okay, so you may view the live stream at murraycitylive.com or you could go to our Facebook page at Murray City Utah. So, there is no physical meeting location will be available tonight. If you would like to submit your comments or force citizen comment or the public hearing, you may do so by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murrayutah.com. Again, comments are limited to less than three minutes, include your name and contact information, and they will be read into the transcript. All right, did we get it?
You got it.
Okay, Dale.
Okay, I want to introduce Mike and Robert. Michael Romero is a lifelong resident of Utah or Murray, Utah. He met his wife for 46 years, Kathy Pulser Romero at Murray High School. Together, they have four children and two grandchildren. Michael has a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in public administration from the University of Utah. Currently, he owns a Murray-based business for Merrill &amp; Associates, Inc., an independent claim administration consulting firm. He is the Chair of the Murray Personnel Advisory Board and Director of Murray City Children's Pantry. He is also a Chair Moderator of the Murray Baptist Church, board member of the Frank Cordova Foundation, a member of the Murray Exchange Club, and he is a former member of the Utah Transit Authority representing Salt Lake and Tooele Counties from 2007 to 2017. Robert Merrill has been the pastor of the Murray Baptist Church since January 2020. He is the son of a police officer and a factory worker. Pastor Merrill's moved to Salt Lake City in 1994 and has spent more than half his life living on the Wasatch Front. He's committed to education, having earned a bachelor's degree and two master's degrees. He spent 20 years coaching, 21 years, coaching and mentoring youth by volunteering in Salt Lake Parks and Rec programs and Utah Athletic Association, the two Salt Lake City and two Salt Lake Juvenile Detention Facilities. He is committed to the commerce and economic life of Utah, having been employed by the University of Utah, American Express, Select Portfolio Services, Inc., and more for more than 25 years. He's been involved in spiritual life of the Valley formally and informally over the same amount of time, having spent a decade as a assistant pastor to the historic Calvary Baptist Church, Salt Lake City, under the guidance of Pastor Fred Davis, and three years of chaplain at Primary Children's Medical Center. Pastor Merrill's is married to a native Utah, Tasha Merrill's, E. Green, an established banking professional. They have one teenage son, God, I'm sorry, I hope you get through that, Kayden, who will be in high school freshman in the fall of 2020. And with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, good afternoon. It's nice to see and hear everyone, even though it's remotely. Hope everyone is doing well. Let me begin by thanking the mayor and the city council for the opportunity to share my comments regarding the police and racial tensions sweeping our country and affecting our community, as well as to the city's response recommendations. Let me say that the civil unrest seen across the U.S. following the killing of George Floyd reminds me of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.'s famous observation that "a riot is the language of the unheard." King condemned the act of rioting, but at the same time challenged audience to consider what such actions say about the experience of those marginalized in society. He went on to say, "Social justice and progress are the absolute guarantors of riot prevention." In other words, peace cannot exist without justice. Former President Barack Obama best describes our situation today when he recently said, "It's everyone's wish for life just to get back to normal during the pandemic." But we have to remember that for millions of Americans, being treated differently on account of race is tragically and painfully normal, whether it's dealing with the healthcare system, interacting with the criminal justice system, or jogging down the street. He goes on to say that "this should not be normal. It can't be normal." If we want our children to grow up in a nation that lives to its highest ideals, we can and must be better. This raises a long and recurring question, how do we address and prevent police misconduct and racial tensions from occurring in our community? This is a dialogue that's occurring in many municipalities with stakeholders across the country. Former President George Bush Jr. recently shed some light on things that we need to consider. He points out that America's greatest challenge has been long, has long been to unite people of different backgrounds into a single nation of justice and opportunity. He believes that we need to start living up to our American ideal and the fundamental truth that all human beings are created equal and endowed by God with certain rights. He reminds us that we often underestimate how radical this quest really is and how our valued principles challenge systems of intended or assumed injustice. According to Mr. Bush, we can only see the reality of America's needs through the eyes of the threatened, oppressed, and disenfranchised. In his opinion, lasting justice will only come by peaceful means. To Mr. Bush, this means looting is not liberation, destruction is not progress. Lasting peace requires truly equal justice. The rule of law ultimately depends on the fairness and legitimacy of the legal system, and the goal of achieving justice for all is the duty of everyone. Last month, I had the opportunity, along with Pastor Robert Merrill's of Murray Baptist Church, to observe Murray Police Chief Burnett's presentation and Mayor Camp's introduction of proposals to the June 16 Murray Council Committee of the Whole regarding police accountability and racial justice. Let me first say, I applaud Police Chief Burnett and the Murray City Police Department for the practices and policies currently in place addressing race policing. I can emphasize how important it is that the community understands where the police are at and what's going on, especially in light of what is happening in the country and in our state today. It's important that there are clear procedures by which police officers provide information and are transparent about their practices with the community if they expect mutual respect. It's clear that the community expects police accountability to involve holding police officers and the agency for effective crime control services and maintaining order while treating individuals fairly and within the bounds of the law. And secondly, let me applaud Mayor Camp for the two proposals he has introduced to the council and community for consideration. The joint resolution affirming the city's commitment to police accountability and racial justice in the city policing practices, and the formation of a public safety advisory board with the purpose to review existing police and fire department procedures, policies, standards, and programs, and to make recommendations to the chiefs of police and fire, as well as the mayor. This definitely appears to be a step in the right direction if this is truly a citizen advisory board meant to address community complaints about officer misconduct. And when it works well, it can help hold police accountable and develop trust with local residents. In order for this board to be instrumental in bringing change, it's important that the city identify people who bring broad, inclusive mix of experience and background and who are representative of those they're supposed to serve. It's clear that diversity on the board will promote and foster productive dialogue and unified actions of progress. Now, this challenge is not going to be easy because we're being asked to be open and honest despite whatever discomfort and awkwardness may arise to hear the truth if we are to succeed and achieve equity and fairness. What is clear in all of this is that the community expects the police to protect the constitutional rights and freedoms of citizens. At the same time, it requires that the police act with integrity and not violate certain rights against unreasonable search and seizures or excessive force. The formation of a citizen advisory board creates hope and expectation in the community that there is a local government body in place that has the power to conduct investigations and hearings, compel police cooperation, determine appropriate disciplinary action, and conduct statistical analysis of infractions. There's no doubt in the minds of many that the creation of a citizen advisory board creates a great opportunity for all community stakeholders to come to the table, to share their complaints, concerns, and frustrations, and to be able to work collaboratively with local law enforcement, the city, and other groups towards a common goal of a safer and better community for everyone. Again, let me thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today, and I look forward, along with Murray Baptist Church, to work with the police department in Murray City to ensure that the groups that have been traditionally disenfranchised from the local government process are represented and have a voice on this board. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Did you guys have any questions? You just want me to continue?
Go ahead and continue, Robert.
Okay, thank you. Just setting my time right now. So, as Mike mentioned earlier, I also want to thank you for the opportunity to present before you today, and I'm pleased that you guys have included us as part of this agenda. And so, I have two objectives for this afternoon. It's always good to know where we want to go. So, the first is to share some observations and also some options for moving forward based on the things that were presented last meeting and things that Mike touched on a minute ago. And then, secondly, I also wanted to share the vision that I have for Murray Baptist Church and how that will lead to greater partnership with the Murray community as a whole. And so, first of all, in light of the death of George Floyd and others, obviously, there's a lot of public discussion and a lot of private discussion about what's happening along racial lines in our country and also here in our community. And I just wanted to highlight something I shared with our congregation recently. Psalm 31, verses 8 and 9, and not to make this a religious thing, just simply says that "we need to speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up and judge fairly. Defend the rights of the poor and needy." And so, as I, as I reiterate what that meant, I want to just share a little bit about, from an article that came out in The Atlantic, and it was from December 23, 2017. And some of the statistics that were presented were interesting, but I want you to know that the data for that article and some of the interviews they did happened here in Salt Lake City. And so, one-third more, I'm sorry, black Americans are one-third more likely than whites to be stopped by the police, probably not surprising. It's up to one-third more likely for blacks to be ticketed during a stop. Blacks are three times more likely to be searched. They're three times more likely to be subject to the use of force, and one study finds that unarmed black people are almost three times, three and a half times more likely to be shot by police than unarmed whites. So, as we talk about those types of incidents, immediately, some people will think that it's a racial issue. And certainly, while we think that's just my wife coming in, sorry about that. Certainly, while we do believe there's some racial components, we often have to look beyond just the fact that it was a white police officer and a black victim. But we really want to understand how implicit bias plays a role and some of the disparities that we see. And I know that Police Chief talked about that during his time last month, but I want to go a little bit further into that. In 2007, a study, a study was done by the University of Colorado Neuroscience and Psychology Professor Josh Correll. And something that I wanted to point out to this committee is that this simulation, what he did is he ran officers through a simulation that repeatedly challenged them to identify what objects black and white subjects were holding in their hands and then decide whether or not to shoot. In repeated trials, officers were quicker to decide to shoot armed black subjects than armed whites, and took longer to decide to spare unarmed blacks. There were virtually no racial discrepancies in the officers' mistaken shots, but later studies found bias crept in when officers were subjected to mental stress. Something else that was pointed out in this study, but then studies going back as far as 2001, is that police officers and civilians are consistently more likely to associate black faces with criminality, to misidentify common objects as weapons after being shown photos of black faces, and to label photos of black people as threatening. This should indicate that while implicit bias training is helpful to uncover some of the issues, it does not always provide ways of making officers who take such training more effective in using what they've learned in policing actions. And so, as I reflected back on the letter from the Murray City Mayor Blair Camp and Police Chief Craig Burnett to the Murray residents and businesses posted on June 16, I appreciate the acknowledgement of incidents between officers and minority communities across the country and even here in our state. I also wanted to acknowledge that the letter to the community does open up one level of transparency, and I want to express appreciation for that. At the same time, I also want to push for even more transparency based on what some of our other local law enforcement agencies are doing that I think Murray City could learn from. I've been in attendance at several meetings locally, whether it was the Salt Lake County's mayor or the Salt Lake City mayor, and Sheriff Rosie Rivera happened to be in both of those locations. And what she's done in terms of taking greater steps of transparency, I also think would be good for any, any law enforcement agency here within the state. But specifically, a couple of the things that I wanted to highlight and she has on our website are the following. The Salt Lake County Sheriff has listed the 10 required classes that are included in the 13-week Utah Department of Public Safety Peace Officer Standards and Training. They've also listed the classes that make up the 40 hours of state-mandated in-service training that's required for their certification. They've included the additional classes that are taught annually, as well as those that are taught on a rotating basis, and they've done that starting with the 2015-2016 cycle, and they've carried that all the way through the 2019-2020 cycle. That way, the community also knows what classes are being taken, and as they put out the next year, we would know which classes are being scheduled. Also, on their website, they list, and I think this is an incredible step, I know it took a lot of time, but they list that adversity within the sheriff's office, including the breakdown of diversity among the overall sheriff staff, with separate breakouts of diversity among the sworn staff and the civilian staff. And any of these things that I'm mentioning, I can also send a link so that you guys can see these as well. Another page, there's a link to the sheriff's office EEOP utilization report. And what this report does, it highlights the department's focus. It breaks out all of their positions, the ethnicity of each officer and each civilian, the positions that they hold, and also how they're represented in terms of supervisory leadership as well. And so, as a result of this, they're able to put forth a report that says, "Here are our objectives. Here's what we're trying to focus on." For example, it may be Latino female high rank in certain areas. But they highlight the areas that they want to focus on and the plan for actually doing that. And what I found very beneficial and helpful was the fact that it's right up on the website for anyone to see and to be able to track their progress and success in terms of the statistics of their workforce. And another recommendation that I have is, we heard the Police Chief talk about implicit bias training. We've seen it documented in various articles throughout the country and several police forces. One of the things that stands out in all of the articles is that while it's good to know that implicit bias training is occurring, and I'll be honest to say that one of the things that is pointed out in pretty much all of those articles is that police officers and others become very aware of their biases. But one of the things each of the article fails to actually connect us to is how making those officers aware of their biases actually helps them improve their policing. And there's no actual statistics that show that is improving their policing. And so, one of the things that I think Murray City, as well as state and local police departments here within Utah, can actually benefit from and actually take the lead in, is actually developing some type of assessment. So, not just having implicit bias training, but actually having some type of assessment or best practices for, "Here's how we're going to use this information to actually police better and improve communication and transparency with the minority communities or our communities in general, not just minority communities." And so, I think that's an opportunity for the Murray Police Force, as well as other police forces here in Utah, to actually take a lead and become really a standard of excellence for our police forces. And then, finally, another recommendation that I have is, we, Mike mentioned the creation of the Public Safety Advisory Board and how that can be a very important step within the community. I like to be a problem solver and part of the solution, and I would love to be a part of that Public Safety Advisory Board to make sure that we're getting diverse voices involved in that as well. And again, I'm not sure what all that will entail or take or who's been selected maybe to participate on that, but as a community member, I would love to actually be a part of that. And so, I mentioned at the beginning that Psalm 31:8 and 9 reminds us as, as people of faith to stand up for those who can't speak for themselves, and I've talked about it from the standpoint of how we utilize that within the community. But now, I actually want to take the rest of the time or a few minutes to introduce you all to the operating guidelines of Murray Baptist Church as it relates to our engagement and partnership with the city of Murray. So, Acts 242 quickly reminds us in one verse, in one statement, what I think our church is about and how I think it can benefit the Murray community. And that verse says, "They devoted themselves to the apostles' teaching and to fellowship and to breaking of bread and to prayer." And one simple phrase, there are five key things that I want to briefly articulate that will give you a sense for where Murray Baptist Church is heading and how it can benefit our community. So, first of all, it talked about doctrine and teaching, and I wanted to say that the outcome of all teaching at our church is understanding. Our driving question is, what is it we're trying to teach, share, or learn, whether it's spiritual, physical, social, to enhance the lives of our members and our citizens? And by that, I mean, how can Murray Baptist Church be a part of learning something, sharing something that can benefit people in the community spiritually, physically, such as making sure people are informed about COVID-19 socially, to make sure we're connecting to some of the activities and information that the community's sharing? But how can we enhance people in our church, but also people within the community? There's a mention of fellowship. The outcome of fellowship is belonging. This is a twofold objective with an internal and an external focus. Our driving question here is, how are we helping others to feel a part of the love of God? And also remind people that they're not alone in their journey. So, whether it's a spiritual journey, whether it's a personal journey, we want to make sure people know that there are people around them who support them and can, who, who, who can identify with them at whatever stage of the journey they're in. And that's something we are striving for and aspiring to as a congregation. Breaking bread, this sounds pretty easy. The outcome of breaking bread is a development of deepened relationships with others. It implies nourishment, sure, physical nourishment, eating, but it implies something even deeper, which is intimacy. And so, we want to make sure people are feeling nourished spiritually, physically, emotionally. And as people walk in the doors of our church, we don't just care about them from a spiritual perspective, but if you walk in, we want you to know that we care about you as a whole person and not just what you bring to the table spiritually, but who you are physically, emotionally, and everything that you bring in terms of your family life and everything else. But we want to make sure that the relationships that you have are deepened. The last thing that was mentioned was prayer, and the outcome of prayer is connection. So, whether you're a very spiritual person or not, whether you pray or not, for us, prayer is an act of connection. It's a connection to a higher power, but more importantly, a connection to others. Prayer represents individual and collective opportunities to identify and focus on the needs of other people. It's a commitment to walking in the hardest moments of people's lives, but also celebrating their successes along the way. And so, I think that's something we can all aspire to. And then, lastly, while it wasn't mentioned specifically in the verse or in what I read earlier, outreach. The outcome of prayer, outcome of all the things that I mentioned before, is fulfillment. And this lies at the intersection of the other four elements, whether it was teaching, fellowship, breaking bread, prayer, everything that we do, all those things together, the, the common element, the intersection of that is outreach. We want to make sure that reaching out to others. We want to make sure that we're not just a church that focuses on being at 184 East, 5770 South, but that we are a church who's actively involved in the community. We're excited about playing a key invisible role in the kids pantry of Murray that Mike mentioned earlier. There's a lot more detail that'll come as part of that in the next several weeks and months. And we're, I'm excited that the parsonage on our property is going to be the distribution center for that community partnership. And of course, that's my son now coming in because we have an active household. And obviously, we can talk more about that partnership later. But we also have plans to develop a ministry partnership with Tosh, the Orthopedic Specialty Hospital, over the next few years. We have additional plans to enhance the lives of the citizens of Murray in many ways and for many years to come. But I did want to say thank you for allowing us to come speak today, to introduce ourselves to you. I know that you know Mike, but you don't really know me, but I'm sure you'll be seeing and hearing from me much more in the next few years and months. Thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to speak before you today. As a member of the Murray community and also representative of Murray Baptist Church, thank you. And again, we're excited to have. And again, we're excited to have had this opportunity today.
All right, thank you. So Robert, let me just ask you, you're a member of the Baptist Church here in Murray, right?
Yes.
We didn't get an introduction on, on who you were, so.
Sure. So Dale gave you a little introduction, but I've been in Utah for the past 25 years. I was the assistant pastor at Calvary Baptist Church under Pastor Davis, which most people in the state know or across the country know. So I was the assistant pastor there. I've been involved in this community for the 25 years that I've been here, whether it's been involved with juveniles, whether it's been involved with adults. But I've spent a lot of time coaching, mentoring, and making sure that young people in this community know that there's an advocate for them, that they know they have support, but also making sure they have expectations of excellence, that we don't just want to go out and talk to people nicely. We want them to know that we have high expectations of all the people that we deal with, whether it was kids that we coached, whether it was kids in the detention center. We want them to know that there are expectations of you. And I don't know about you guys, but any studies that I've read and been a part of mentoring, when you don't have expectations for others, then it's very easy, easy for them not to meet them. But when they know you have expectations and support, then they're more likely to hit those and exceed those because they know that people are in their corner. And so that's something that I've strived to do both for youth, but I also want to make sure that that, that attitude spreads through the Murray Baptist Church, but also through the Murray community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions, fellow council members?
Can I go?
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Diane. Go ahead, Diane.
No, I'll go next.
Okay. I just want to say a big thanks Pastor Robert for, for your words. Mike and Kathy, thank you so much. I personally really appreciate you coming here to, to do this. And personally, I hope you're on, I hope you're on that committee myself, so. But thank you very much, and I'll give a hang ten to your son who gave one when you didn't see behind you. Anyway, I just want to give a thanks to both of you, Mike and Kathy, you know how much I love and appreciate you. And I could feel a beautiful spirit from Pastor Merrill, so thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
I just also want to echo what Brett said, and it's so nice to meet you Pastor Merrill. And good to see you, Mike. So anyway, hopefully we'll see you again. So thank you so much for your participation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I did have one follow-up thought because I believe that the council member Turner, you were the one who asked about a social worker, I believe, to the Chief of Police, if that would be beneficial. And one of the things that I think would be helpful, and I just want to spend just one moment on this. When Richard Brooks was shot in the Wendy's parking lot, he was actually running away from police. Yes, I know he had a taser. Yes, I know that he resisted arrest, but he was actually running away. And one of the things that occurred to me, having played football, you know, through high school and competitive sports, is you have a lot more adrenaline as an individual when you're chasing someone or when you feel like somebody is escaping, escaping from you. And while these trained police officers were, were not in direct harms way, one of them took upon himself to shoot the individual, right? And one of the things that I thought of was back to your recommendation of would a social worker, someone like that be helpful? And I'm wondering if that person, that position could be helpful in connection with the implicit bias training to be able to identify the difference between people being emotional and reacting when, you know, they had this person's car, they had his ID more than likely. They already had a failed alcohol test, breathalyzer test. They know where he lives, and at this point, they can go pick him up basically if he's running away from them. But there may be an opportunity like that for somebody to walk them through what they're experiencing so that they could, they could actually implement those types of things into implicit bias training to be able to say, wait a minute, here are some things that have escalated, but you still have a responsibility to stop, slow down and make a different decision, knowing that we already have all of this other information about the suspect. And so I just thought that was an interesting proposal and think that there's a way to leverage that and just wanted to comment on that. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think this conversation is very important. So again, thank you so much for being here and always good to see you, Mike.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. It's always good to see you, Mike. It's sorry it's not in person and it's really nice to meet you, Robert. And I think we all know that this is the beginning of many conversations. And I hope that you mentioned the link with Sheriff Rosie Rivera, we're a big fan of her in my home. My daughter actually named her pet after Sheriff Rosie because we've had the privilege of meeting her a few times. And so that's great to hear that she's leading out on some great practices that we can hopefully model after. So thank you for sharing those.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, Dale? All right, we're going to go ahead and move outside.
I've got to say.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Dale.
No, I appreciate you guys as well. Great message as we go forward in this strange time. I think we can, we can learn from each other, we can help each other. No, no, nobody, you know, it's like the old saying, nobody's without sin. Let's find a way, let's find a way to make things better for everybody involved. And I appreciate both of you. It's good to see you healthy again, Mike.
All right, thank you. And sorry Pastor Merrill, I, I don't know why I didn't catch that you were the pastor at the church. So I apologize for that. Okay. But I appreciate you all being here and we're going to go ahead and move forward. We're running behind and we're going to go ahead and move forward with the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan with Mark Morris and Annalise. Go ahead, Mark.
Hey, great, thank you. I appreciate your, your time on your agenda tonight. We've got an update on the Fashion Place Small Area Plan that our firm has been working in collaboration with the city's planning staff and the, the local community. If you remember last time we were here, we talked a bit about housing and laying some, some groundwork for developing more housing in key locations. So today we'd like to give you a brief update. Annalise will talk for a bit about the public survey that we have had out there to get some input, some additional input from the public. And I am going to try to share my screen and we'll see if I am successful at that. Hey, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes, great. So we'll run through a few things. We wanted to give a bit of an overview again about public engagement since we saw you last. Talk a little bit about access to opportunity, some discussion of connectivity, some infrastructure issues around that, and then give you a little bit about implementation and next steps with this, with this particular project. So Annalise is going to talk us through some of the survey response that we've gotten.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, everybody. It's good to see you. And thank you for, again, for this opportunity to give you an update on the Murray Small Area Plan for Fashion Place. So originally, in our public, we wanted to have two different types, two different open houses. And obviously, given the current circumstances and the circumstances that kind of started to come up in March, we wanted to come up with a different option that also had, it was a good alternative that also had a way to be well executed and well distributed throughout the, the project area and throughout the city. So we were able to use Survey Monkey to create an 18-question survey. And we used long answer questions, multiple choice, ranking, style, everything, just to really try to garner as much input as we could and address a multitude of different types of people and keep them interested. So we had graphics to kind of assist in this process. And we were able to use Facebook and Instagram to distribute the survey over the course of the months that we had it out from May 20th to June 20th. And so with all of that being said, and again, we appreciate the help of Murray City staff, we actually received 155 responses. So just to give you a little bit of perspective, we, I think, Mark might have mentioned before, but in our original open house, we only had about 35 people that came, and I wouldn't say only, I shouldn't say that. But we were able to really reach a lot of people with this survey and really were able to get some very thoughtful responses. And so we're very excited about that. So just quickly, I wanted to just go through, we have just seven questions out of the 18 I wanted to highlight the responses to. So I'll just quickly run through those. I know we're short on time. What words were you used to describe the attributes of the Fashion Place West neighborhood? As you can see in this graphic word cloud below, many of the answers had to do with traffic, busy, crowded, congested, a lot of that. And then also a lot of convenient and central and talks about talking about the shopping and things like that. So we think that those are all, while some of the traffic and congested issues are perceived as a negative, it also shows that there's a lot of people traveling through this area. And so with the eventual redevelopment of the Fashion Place West neighborhood, people are already coming through there, and so it won't be an issue, we believe, to get more activity in the area. What is your primary destination when you visit the Fashion Place West neighborhood? We imagined there'd be a lot of people that were visiting to shop, which you obviously see. And we didn't receive a lot of input from people that work in the neighborhood. But as you can see, a lot of people that shop and a lot of people that live here. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the neighborhood? We see one of the biggest issues, as you've seen in the word cloud, was traffic and the perception that there's a lot of crime. And a lot of the comments were related to the track station. Now, we know that some of that is a little bit skewed, but we do value that input. And a lot of the plan implementation and, and recommendations have a lot to do with how future development will impact crime and how future development will impact traffic. So when using the track station, what other forms of transportation are part of your trip? And we see that car is the, by car is the largest kind of segment of people that do use tracks. And so we hope that with this plan and a improved connectivity in the area, that we will see biking and other types of transit used. But you do see there that walking is a large component as well. This question, rank the type of public improvements you think are lacking in the neighborhood. So everything you see here has very, very equitable responses. And so I think that really goes to show that with the connectivity section of this plan, addressing lighting along the street, addressing sidewalks, crosswalks, street trees, bike lanes, things like that. Those are all very important to the community, and I think we'll see a very positive reaction when we give those recommendations. And just the last two, I promise, what types of housing do you wish were more available in your neighborhood? The largest response we had was cottage cluster, and these are types of townhomes. And duplexes are a little bit different, but cottage clusters, so smaller property sizes, a little bit more dense than a single-family neighborhood. But you are seeing that, that single-family or that cottage cluster in higher density is welcome here. Rank the following housing issues in the neighborhood, and housing affordability is one of the, one of the biggest issues that people perceive in this neighborhood. And we know that if you offer different housing options and different housing types, you can also address, begin to address housing affordability. So we do hope that in some areas, that apartments will be appropriate, townhomes will be appropriate, and a little bit more dense of development will be appropriate to address and assist people of all housing needs. I'll give it back to Mark.
Great, thank you, Annalise. One, one topic that we wanted to mention at this point, it kind of bridges that gap between housing and connectivity. The Wasatch Front Regional Council, which is one of the partners on funding for this project, has a metric that they call access to opportunity, and that's really looking at the ability of lower-income households to, to have access to transportation and jobs. They've got some, some great mapping tools that they'd look at, where, where are areas where we have households that might need additional support, but also increase their, their access to that opportunity? If they get a new job, do they have an easy, easy way to, to travel, to get to that, to get to that opportunity? So in the, the small area plan itself, the two main sections, the first, we talked about housing and expanding housing choices within this small area, but also increasing that connectivity to, to jobs to increase that, that ATO score. So a lot of these really are in line with a lot of what the, what Murray City's general plan indicates, focusing growth near high-capacity transportation, such as the track system, front runner and the bus network, higher densities near those, near those facilities, and the intermixing of homes and jobs. So the, the Fashion Place mall site itself is a significant job center for jobs of a certain type. And looking at this as a well-connected neighborhood, what, how are, how are we able to increase the number of jobs that might be within this area or easily accessed from this area? So we have been working with Fair and Paris Transportation Consultants to look at recommendations to, to this particular small area as far as overcoming barriers to connectivity. So in the, the plan itself that will, will provide you with, with this presentation, as well as the draft of that connectivity section that I mentioned, what we've done is basically split it up into different modes and looking at what are those gaps that we need to address within this, within this area? So vehicular connectivity gaps, what are ways in which the city can prioritize and invest in improving those, improving those issues? Working with partners such as UDOT to deal with issues around State Street and its flow and so forth. So breaking down, breaking those down so that then the city can prioritize, how do we, how do we kind of go down this list? It's sort of a punch list of ways in which the neighborhood can be improved for that vehicular connectivity system. Bicycle connectivity, anywhere that you have a significant job center, housing concentration and transit, improving those bicycle connections will go a long way to addressing those questions of, you know, traffic flow and congestion and those, and those sorts of things. There's relatively good bicycle connectivity within the neighborhood, but there are some very significant barriers that, that need to be addressed. So of course, crossing over or under the, the two interstate freeways that cross through the area, as well as bicycle connectivity issues around, around State Street. So again, part of this process is looking at, okay, how do we get a good list of these infrastructure improvements? And then help the city identify funding resources to get those, to get those addressed. The neighborhood, of course, is well-served by public transit with the, with the tracks platform on the west side of the, the project area. One of the goals in, in talking with UTA, who's been an integral part of this process, is looking at how do we improve the, the connectivity between the mall and the, and the platform? Which is just far enough away to not be, not be as utilized as I think all of us would, would like. So developing some type of circulator or better connectivity between those two, those two destinations. And then pedestrian connectivity, of course, that, that is something that in every neighborhood, we want to improve walkability. The more walkable a neighborhood is, the more people will make that choice that they can, you know, walk to a destination rather than having to get in their car. If you think about the neighborhoods that are west of State Street, they're definitely within walking distance of a lot of destinations. But the quality of that infrastructure certainly discourages, discourages people to walk. So I'll just, one thing I'll, I'll point out, this intersection of Creek Drive and State Street there in the center. If you're a pedestrian, you live in one of these houses that's literally a stone's throw from the mall, you really don't have that choice to walk because that infrastructure just is, is absent. And so one of the key, key infrastructure improvements that are, one of the recommendations is that intersection of Creek Drive. And so one of the key, key infrastructure improvements that are, one of the recommendations is that intersection of Creek Drive and State Street, so that if someone is walking either to or from the mall, whether it be to their home or between the businesses on either side of State Street, that that walkability, that infrastructure, again, is improved to, to encourage that. That's a whole nother story when it comes to UDOT and their, and their concerns. But getting that, that process going as part of this, this plan, one, some of these are just examples of how those, how those connections might be made, where it could be here on the upper right, again, that's that intersection of Creek Drive and State Street. It could be something where it's a pedestrian-activated hybrid beacon, or it could be a full-traffic semaphore that would allow for safer left turns either from, from State or from, from Creek Drive itself. So those are the types of improvements that the small area plan will provide to the city to say, okay, here's a list of improvements that we'd like to make. How do we, how do we kind of start, start tackling those, those pieces? The, the design guidelines section, we're still developing this section, but the focus of, of good design guidelines are things that focus on place-making, street typologies, and site design is really a, a really fundamental factor when it comes to design guidelines. Really focusing attention on design of places that are really difficult to change. So you think about the facade of a building, the color of a building, the materials of a building are quite easily changed. But the location, whether that building addresses the street, is it adding to the walkability or the pedestrian quality of a, of a neighborhood? Really focusing those guidelines on those types of things, the, the building placement, how that building addresses the corner, what sort of quality of public space is there? So that the city has, has good direction that then property owners and developers can look at and say, here are the, here are the elements in these design guidelines that will, you know, be applied to this, this particular neighborhood, so that when that development comes along, it's fulfilling those objectives. You know, improving walkability, improving the quality of the neighborhood, improving all of those, those goals that, that have been identified through this, through this process. So site design guidelines, again, focusing how the, how new development addresses the public realm. How does it improve, you know, sort of incrementally, we're slowly improving the quality of, of walkability of the, of the neighborhood? The platform in the mall, that's a walkable distance, you know, it's about a fifteen-minute walk from platform to the mall, but the quality of that walk is quite low, and so it feels like you're walking forever and ever because the, the, the quality of that urban design just isn't, isn't there yet. So we've got a lot of, a lot of opportunity for improvement. And then finally, the, the way that we have structured the final section of the plan in working with, with city staff is looking at short-term, zero to five years, midterm, five to ten years, and then long-term plan or projects that might take a little bit longer to, to implement. So things that, you know, as any city can update policies, change zoning, change ordinances that can start to accomplish those goals. That doesn't take, doesn't take millions and millions of dollars to do those sorts of things. And so that's a really great place to start, to look at how, what sort of zoning changes, what sort of ordinance can, ordinances can the city update in order to, again, encourage the type of development that you're after? Looking at city infrastructure, adding bike lanes, adding quality streetscape, those sorts of things typically can start in kind of short-term timeframe. Midterm timeframes, we've, you know, been, again, collaborating with UTA and UDOT to understand the timing and the time horizons of changes to their infrastructure, such as the Cottonwood Street Bridge just north of the platform and the Winchester Bridge over two fifteen, so that when those projects come along, the city and these other agencies are lined up as far as, you know, if there's the opportunity to replace a bridge, widening the, the amount of space you've got there to improve the pedestrian realm or bike lanes or those types of elements, making sure that those are all, you know, everyone's kind of communicating in advance, so that when it comes along, you've got, kind of got your, your wants in that, in that process. Long-term changes, you know, we had mentioned previously in talking, talking with you about long-term changes to the mall site itself. There seems to be some desire on the, on the part of the management of the mall to improve the walkability of that site. They recognize that if you're a pedestrian arriving at the curb, that really your only option is to kind of wander through the parking lot, just like everybody else, there aren't clear pedestrian routes. There seems to also be desire on their part to increase the development on their, on their site. Having something like a parking structure that they could accommodate more people there, but also expand the types of uses that are there, where, you know, currently it's a retail restaurant destination. Is there opportunity there to bring in office-type of employment or multifamily housing? Those sorts of things where it really becomes, again, this center where you've got a lot of opportunity. You've got a lot of access to lots of different, lots of different destinations, which, again, would accomplish a lot of the goals that the city has set for these, these types of high-value locations. Then finally, just next steps, we're working on completing a draft of the plan itself, working through input from, from the city staff. And we'll be working on developing that draft so that we can provide that to, to your group and to the, the planning commission who we met with last week to get additional input and hopefully working towards adoption of that, of that plan. And that's my last slide. What, what, what questions or comments do you have for us?
Anyone have comments or questions?
Rosalba, I have, I have a question, it's the same one that I asked the last time. And you did mention that you can help us with funding. And so, you know, that's, I think, I think these are all wonderful ideas. And, you know, I wholeheartedly support that, but my concern is funding.
Sure, sure, yeah, that's the, that's the million-dollar question, isn't it? I think one of the elements of that implementation section that we look at is identifying potential sources, whether it be something that the city itself, you know, redevelopment agency has certain tools for improvement to, to city infrastructure, that funding can also be used to encourage development in, in key locations and in ways that, ways that you want it to, to happen. I think there's a lot of opportunity for, for partnership. UDOT, of course, has, has goals when they come in and improve their, their facilities. A lot of that you can, you know, encourage, you know, kind of accomplishment of city goals as long as you're kind of dialed into their, to their process. But, yeah, but as I, as I mentioned, that implementation section will have some recommendations as far as whether it might be worth the city's efforts to try to develop a, an RDA area for, you know, for the area around the platform and so forth.
Okay, that would be, that would be helpful. I just want to make sure that we're aware of what our options are, so, you know, that's going to determine whether we do this, because I think-
Sure. Yeah, and I think I'll, I'll brag on Annalise's behalf. In Annalise's previous life, she worked for the redevelopment agen- agency of Midvale City, and so she's well-aware of the different funding mechanisms that the city might have access to and stays on top of, you know, the state legislature, as you well know, changes how the city redevelopment agencies are regulated with some frequency. And so just understanding the current opportunities for those types of financing options.
I will, if you don't mind, Mark, just to echo kind of what you're saying. And just to also add that a lot of times, if, if we're going to be doing a text amendment to the zoning ordinance and the land use ordinance, a lot of times cities will put some of the burden, I wouldn't say burden, but share the cost for new development with, with the developer. So if that means, you know, in front of your fifty-foot frontage, you need, you know, we, we, in order to get maybe more density or to get lower parking requirements, et cetera, we will offer you those in exchange for completing the streetscape, improving the, you know, the landscape medians, things like that. So a lot of times those can be a public credit partnership, and that's a very common thing. And I, so while this might, like Mark said, not, might not be a project area as of now, there's still a lot of funding mechanisms that, that don't just fall onto the city's capital, capital funds.
Great, thanks, Annalise.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions, Brett? Okay, go ahead.
I, I had one question. So my, my favorite part of reading it was sort of the simple solutions like the plan to reroute the two oh nine bus about how just a simple change in the drop-off would make such a difference in sort of the flow of using public transit in that area. But I, I was concerned about the feasibility of if the top two priorities are or concerns are traffic and affordable housing. If traffic's already a complication, do you think that we could increase affordable housing in that area while still problem-solving the traffic issues we're seeing now?
Sure, yeah, I think that's, again, that's another million-dollar question. I think that the, the traffic that we see, you know, on Winchester and on State Street, I think those two, those are sort of the main arterials through, through this particular area of the city. And so making sure that those streets are designed in ways that people have other, other choices. If someone's making, you know, a two-block trip, that what other choice do they have? If it's 5:00 PM and they know that the traffic is going to be backed up, do they have, do they have other, do they have other options? So I think it's really, it's designing streets that are more complete and provide a more consistent network. And, you know, we've met with UDOT a couple of times to talk about signalization, timing, and things like that to deal with traffic. I think no matter what happens, you're never going to have no traffic at certain times of the day, you know, 5:00 PM. If you're trying to get on State Street and, you know, make a left turn anywhere through here, that's going to be a challenge. But again, improving all of the networks so that there is more, there's more choice. I think when it comes to affordable housing, early on in the, in this project, we talked a little bit about the connection between housing costs and transportation costs, that the best thing we can do on kind of a household level is provide housing in the right location. That if you're getting an affordable place to live, but it's in a place where every person who comes to that house has to have a vehicle in operating order, that the housing is not actually affordable because you're increasing those costs so much. So when we provide better, better location for that housing, that if there's a household that lives in a, you know, a new townhome that's built in this area, and maybe instead of a household with three cars, they can become a household with two cars, that can drastically change the affordability of, of a neighborhood. And again, that kind of access to opportunity, that you, you have the ability to, you know, make different choices, have access to different job centers. So, yeah, those, those two, I guess, those are the, really the two things that are kind of driving this project is how do we address the transportation networks with growth? And how do we provide more affordable housing in a really important location?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Rosalba, if I might for just a second. I think, I think making, making it as walkable a neighborhood as you can will help with the traffic, but, and maybe timing lights. I don't know, during the Christmas season or during really busy shopping season, it's backed up from seventy-two-hundred South on one end to forty-fifth South on the other end, trying to get to the mall, it's just getting through light after light. So I don't know. I, I, I watched the planning commission, and it looked like you, you talked about adding another light for, for pedestrians to walk across, I think, right there by Olive Garden. We'd really have to work hard on timing those lights, so we wouldn't just snarl more.
Yeah, and I, I think that that particular intersection, you know, the, the transportation planners we've been talking to, that particular intersection, having the opportunity for a signalized left, both in and out of the mall, would improve the quality of that network. But again, you know, in, in talking with Trey about that sort of the Christmas season, I don't know that there's any amount of signalization that would turn that into, you know, no traffic at Christmas, but just having it flow a little bit better, you know, timing and signalization, those sorts of, those sorts of things. But, yeah, certain times of day and times of year, I think that that corridor is, is going to be heavily used no matter what. Which, again, that's sort of a, a blessing for the city that, you know, the, the most highly-used mall in the, in the region that happens to be in your, in your city. But just improving kind of the experience of getting to and from that during busy, busy times of year is, is definitely a challenge.
Hey, great. Thank you so much. We appreciate your presentation. We look forward to hearing more from you guys. And we're going to go ahead, yeah, of course. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on our, on our agenda. We have sacred energy zone map amendment from G dash O to C dash D. Melinda, all right, Melinda, no pressure or anything, but you have ten minutes. Go ahead.
All right, my goal, council, is to make up some time for you. So let me, I think my screen is being shared. So this evening before you, we have a quick presentation on a zone map amendment that's been requested by Ms. Janet Wall. She owns Sacred Energy LLC, which is a retail stop shop that's over on forty-five-hundred South. She also owns some property at two ninety-six South or East forty-five-hundred South. That's right at the southwest corner of Forty-Fifth and Atwood Boulevard. And it's point three six acres, but she has requested to go from the general office to the C D zone. And let me see, we go to the next slide here. See, what I should do is that. So this is an aerial shot that just shows the subject property here, again, at the quarter of Forty-Fifth and Atwood Boulevard, this property shown in yellow. We wanted to show, right now, the current zoning is general office, that's the light blue. Right next door to this, to the west, there is a parcel that is already zoned C D, which is a commercial development. And the, this is the future land use map, so it shows that the future land use of the area there along the south part of forty-five-hundred South is to go to the general commercial, which is the red, the, the red shading there. So I want to just give you a brief idea of the different uses that can be, that can be used in the existing, the general office zone and the proposed zone. And this is really the main reason why Ms. Wall wants to do a zone map amendment is because she would like to move that sacred energy retail store over to this property. And the general office zone really is not a good zone to have both commercial and retail uses. So the existing GO zone, the general office, is used primarily for medical and professional offices, advertising, things like employment services pharmacies. And you can also get some public and quasi-public uses with a conditional use permit. The proposed zone, which is the commercial development zone again, is more fit for commercial and retail uses. There's restaurants, banks, government services that are allowed, schools, contractors, vehicle sales, et cetera. So really, the, the zone change for her desired use is more appropriate. She also wants to combine this, her sacred energy with a bed and breakfast that she received approval for a couple of months back with the conditional use permit from the planning commission. So she would have a combined retail area with her sacred energy. planning commission. So she would have a combined retail area with her sacred energy business and then the bed, bed and breakfast. So this is just a photo of the subject property that she's wanting to change. So you can see there the little yellow house there at the corner of 45th and Atwood. That's looking south. So I want to just give you a summary of the planning commission meeting that was held on May 21st. 21st. They, planning commission reviewed the item and held a public hearing. We did mail out 52 public notices for the hearing. We did not receive any public comments on the zone map amendment request. The planning commission then voted unanimously, unanimously six zero to send a positive recommendation for approval to the city council. So our recommendation, and this will, this will come before you in a public hearing at the next meeting on July 21st. But our recommendation is to follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve the zone map amendment for the property at 296 East 4500 South and to move that zone from general office GO to CD commercial development. So if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. And.
Anyone have any questions?
Stop sharing the screen.
Anyone, anyone? Okay. I have a question, Melinda. So is she moving her sacred energy store now that's an R and B to this location?
I believe that is her, her desire is to move that store to combine so that she's able to better manage both businesses simultaneously. So she would move that to the, the bed and breakfast property there.
Oh, okay. I guess I, I was just trying to understand if she's gonna have the two separate businesses and then do essentially the same things in both places, even though they're zoned differently?
Yeah, I, I believe the intent is just to consolidate. So she would have one location for both.
I was just curious, but awesome. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Since there are none, thank you, Melinda, so much for that presentation. We look forward to seeing it on our agenda. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item, oops, sorry, I muted myself. Item number four. To, oh yes, to for 2020 mitigation plan and Assistant Fire Chief Joey Middleton will be presenting. Middle, Joey, you have about 10 minutes, so no pressure.
All right, no problem. I think I can get through this in 10 minutes unless by chance you guys have a lot of questions. But you know what? I think I can even get that then. So I'm assuming my screen is looking pretty good for you guys. You guys can see the mitigation plan up right now, right?
Yes.
All right. I get a geek out on you guys just a little bit with the mitigation plan because this is emergency management material. So not only, when you look at the fire department, one of the jobs that the mayor has given us is the emergency manager falls underneath us, but it's really citywide. So it's not necessarily, even though you guys kind of picture me as the fire guy, it really is citywide. And what a mitigation plan is, is something that helps us physically plan ahead on going through our emergencies such as COVID, earthquakes, you know, major pandemics, you know, or flooding, whatever it might be throughout it. And let me, there we go. All right. So I've got a couple of slides for you guys and hopefully that'll help explain this. Our goal is to meet all of the aspects of region eight, which is our FEMA region. And you guys are all familiar with FEMA, that is all post, you know, nine 11 and Hurricane Katrina between the response. So with that, what does that mean? So hopefully we're going to be able to plan for what to do after the dust settles, after any emergency, such as even a recovery plan of businesses and actions, or how to better prepare our business to be COVID resilient, you could say. And that wasn't necessarily on our top of our mind in 2019 when we made this mitigation plan, but that is something that's in the works to where it's more on the top of our list, but it actually was in this. Another item was our earthquake that happened. So that mitigation plan, what it did is prior to this, years ago, we started having earthquake, you know, resilient building on like our fire station or any public safety building has to be earthquake resilient, so they don't collapse. We are very lucky in Murray because all three of our main stations are earthquake proof as far as that, and they do meet those standards. So we're set up well, but we also encourage key businesses to set up and key infrastructure within the city. Let me keep going. So if you go back with the history of mitigation plans, I gave you guys a little bit of this before. In 2009 was our first mitigation plan that we put together. And it wasn't the first part of emergency management. We've always had an emergency management plan or an emergency management operations plan, but mitigation is something that's come out the last 10, 15 years really heavy and strong. In order to be eligible for a lot of the funding, we need this plan. We did update it in 2014 and 15 that you guys approved also. And now here we are in 2019. We found out quite a few different items that we can improve on. And as a county, this one, we've really gotten together and the cities have had a large amount of input on this 700 page plan. You guys get seven slides. However, when you're needing some light reading, then we've got that 700 page plan. And I believe I forwarded Jan a link or that's part of the information. And if you guys want any of that 700 page plan, I am happy to go over any parts of it with you. It does have each and individual, each and every city in the counties plan is why part of it's so long. And the other part is we have our respective districts with our region aids and also our state and then our county level, and they all blend now. That's the biggest change of 2019 that we have is our plans go from the city to the county to the state to the FEMA, and they're one path to get there that we're all approaching at the same method. And we're pretty proud of that, to have that going through. A snapshot, we did some surveys in 2019 for the public out there as a county. And these are what people tended to think was our big items that we should mitigate. Earthquake was obviously our number one utility failure, which didn't necessarily hit our books as high. However, it is something that is on our minds and especially with our drills that we run in emergency management in the city, it's something that I heavily engage on. And I think our utility one is coming up hopefully next year if we can cross our fingers and have some time without COVID, that we can actually engage and do some personal drills on. Severe weather and so on and so forth that you guys see on that list. Here's the actual ones that we identified with our probability factors that we all filled out. And this is Murray's here that you guys see. So earthquake actually hits our probability at the highest at 60 over to the right hand side of the screen. Flooding hits us at 57. Now, the beauty of that is this is where our hazards rank. This isn't necessarily where we would experience the most amount of damage or need the most amount of help. Such as the flooding, we're really well set up. We always panic a little bit when we see Murray Park flooding because we don't like our park with water in it. However, as the mayor and many of you guys have said, one of the key items that that park is set up for is to retain that water. So we try and build up our bridges, whether it be a walking bridge or a driving bridge, so it can manage that and still keep some recreation. And that has been done over the past, well, longer than I've been around, which isn't very long, but anyhow, you got it. Uh, let's see. Severe weather, wildfire is another one that I kind of want to point out. That Jordan River, the more that I push this out, since this is also on the political side and I'm in the fire season and fireworks, the more we can do to notify, to protect these little pockets, the less fences, the less homes and the less tragedies that we see. Just on the 26th of July, or sorry, June, we had four different fires started with fireworks that were going off before the season. So I do appreciate all of the extra work and support that you guys have offered for that as well. All right. Why this resolution and meet FEMA requirement? We also are allowed to get funding through this. We're not required to take the funding, but we're allowed to do the funding when we meet the obligation. I already mentioned the countywide and the beauty of this, most of our departments already have working level groups such as our fire. We have all of the fire departments within the county already work together, GIS, IT, police. Each department level has a group that they work with on the county level. Even the CED department with Melinda, she gets with her group throughout the county and they're able to plan and work out the stuff, especially during some of this recovery phases of these businesses that are hopefully starting back up and getting back into a swing of things on how to operate at this new norm that we're on. All right, that is that. I really wanted this fire picture to be my background. However, I didn't want to distract you too much, but now I am ready for any questions, even silly ones. So throw them at me, counsel, or anybody else.
Anyone have any questions? Brett? Perfect. No, Brett? Okay.
You're good. No, Rosal, you're good. You knew, you knew.
I'm watching it.
I have a question. I just want to say thanks, Joey. We, you, you always work so hard on this and you present it well. And I can just tell that there's been a lot of work and I wanted to tell you, we appreciate it. So thanks, Joey, for all you do for us.
Hey, thank you guys for the support. And as questions come up, even though, you know, if you don't have any now, please feel free to ask us anytime about any part of emergency management or the mitigation plan.
Joey, I just wanted to say thank you so much. You do such a great job for Murray and we really appreciate it. Take care.
Yep, you guys too.
Anyone else? You good? All right, Joey, well, thank you so much. Dale? Did I see you? No, okay. All right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Aw, that's a great picture. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move forward to item number five, Murray City Center District Five, East Alley Vacation Petition by Danny Estill and Trey Stokes. Welcome you two. Oh, by the way, you have 10 minutes.
Well, let's see if we can actually save you some time. So Trey isn't with me tonight, so he's, he's left me to, to share this with you. But I think you're all aware of, of the vacations and different things that we're going to need to be doing in, in Murray Center, Murray City Center District. And this is just one more piece. This was a, a piece, and I can show you. I sent the information, but I'll be glad to put it up on the screen if you would like me to, but unless you don't have any questions with it. But we've asked for, or presented this petition before you so that next, the next meeting, we will actually ask for your resolution to vacate this. This is part of mitigation for the parking for the F O E as part of the, of what we're doing with the Manhattan or street extension. Any questions?
No, I think we're good. Sorry, it wasn't on mute there, but I think we're good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We're good in terms of everything and we look forward to seeing the full presentation and we've seen it. And we know that there's been a lot of communication with the F O E about it, so.
Yep, there has been. And as, as part of this, there, there's going to need to be some other things that the attorney's office will be working with, just to kind of give you a heads up that because the city owns the property, we also have to not just vacate, but we have to surplus it to make it, to make it work as part of this deal for the parking. So anyway, that's coming before you in the future as well. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. All right. We are moving over, over to net metering report with Blaine and Matt Youngs. All right, Blaine, you have 30 minutes.
We've got it. We're gonna take, we're taking all 30.
All right, awesome.
Thanks for inviting us. This is kind of weird to do a virtual, but Matt Youngs is going to do most of our presentation tonight. Matt is our energy services manager, and he's the one that receives most of the requests for solar residential applications. And we're going to talk about rooftop solar tonight and probably throw some new terminology like net metering and those types of things. I want to give Matt some of my committee, let's see, item number seven on the agenda is committee reports. I think I can do my reports in just a couple of minutes, so I'm going to give him a couple of minutes. Matt is well versed in this. He knows what he's talking about. Matt, I'm not going to take any more time, so take it away. Thank you, Matt, for doing this.
Okay, you're welcome.
Matt, let me ask you a question. Is that Matt Young or is it Matt Youngs?
Whatever you want to call me, Brett. It's up to you. Well, it's, thank you for the invitation. It's nice to see you all. Hopefully we'll get to see you in person here sooner than later. I'm gonna share my screen here. And let me know if you can see that.
Looks good, Matt.
Okay. There we go. Okay, we'll get right to it. So net metering in Murray City. Murray City had one of the first net metering programs in the state. Our program began back in 2006. We currently, as of the middle of last month, we have 11 commercial customers and 153 residential customers. Install capacity of, of all of those installations is 936 KW, which probably doesn't mean much to you, but that's about enough energy to cover just less than 1% of the energies of, of the city's energy demand at our, our peak usage time. And then the average system size is 5.6 KW, but we'll talk a little bit more about that in the following, the next couple of slides. So breakdown of installations per year. Back when the program began in 2006, you can see that we didn't have a lot of early adopters. Things really took off though in, since 2014. Really what I think drove that is the cost of solar came down quite a bit. And that together with tax incentives that have been provided the last several years, we've seen an uptick in, in installations. For this year, obviously, we're only halfway through the year. We're right on target to, to have about the same number of installations as, as we had last year, around 20 per year. Breakdown of installations per system size. We have, Murray has a 10 KW installation cap. We'll talk a little bit about why that is. But as you can see, the, the majority of our installations are smaller between three and, and 6 KW. And add all of those average out to about 5 KW being the average system size. So I think we, we provided some information in, in the packet before the meeting about what net metering is, but there's a lot of different terms that we, that get thrown out here, but I just wanted to cover just for a couple of minutes what, what we mean by net metering. So with, with this diagram here, the solar panels are installed on a, on a customer's roof. These panels have what are called photovoltaic cells. Photovoltaic or PV for short literally means energy from the sun. So the sun is, the sunlight is converted into direct current or DC power, like the kind of power that's used in batteries. The kind of power that's used in your home is alternating current electricity or AC power. So an, an inverter here is used to convert the electricity from DC to AC power. This electricity is, is first used by, to meet the customer's energy needs. But it's important to note that the amount of electricity generated by customers' solar panels is never going to match perfectly with their energy needs. to match perfectly with their energy needs. So when more energy than a customer needs is produced, it's exported, noted by this arrow here, energy is exported to the, to the power grid from the homeowner's system. When less is produced and needed, the customer receives electricity from the grid, as you see with, with this other area arrow. So a special, special net meter is installed. This is sometimes called a bidirectional meter and that's used to measure the amount of electricity that flows to and from the, the customer's residence. And then at the end of the billing period, which is usually about 30 days, if the customer has exported more electricity to the grid than they've received, they receive, they, they will receive a credit of kilowatt hours on their next month's bill. So we never cut them a check. What they just show is a, it shows on their bill is a bank of kilowatt hours that they've earned with, from that excess energy. So much of the discussion that occurs between utilities and net metering customers and solar vendors has to do with how much that electricity is worth that's exported from a customer's system. And there's a lot of debate about that. And so we, we want to address that. And in the presentation tonight, there's a lot of common questions that, that I get asked as I'm, as I'm working with net metering customers and potential customers. So my presentation is geared towards addressing a lot of the common questions that, that I receive. So hopefully that, that will address maybe some of the questions you may have. So to, to address that question and how much that should be worth, this is a really busy slide, but when I, I want to draw your attention to the, to the bolded line here. This shows what, what Murray City Power, what we provide. Murray, since the beginning of our program, when it started in 2006, we've provided a one-to-one credit at the retail rate. So as you can see here, we have a summer rate and a winter rate, and both of those combine averaged to about nine cents. So we provide a nine cent credit. Rocky Mountain Power, if you were one of their customers that signed up for net metering before 2017, you'll be grandfathered into a, a one-to-one credit as well. Right now, their current customers, if you sign up as a net metering customer currently with Rocky Mountain Power, they're in a transition program. And so they actually have a, a three-tiered or three-block summer rate and a two-tiered winter rate. And their three-block rate, they get up pretty high for, for kilowatt hour usage. Over, over 600 kilowatt hours, you're paying almost 15 cents a kilowatt hour. So this point nine to, this 9.2 cents is, is somewhat reduced from that. What they're proposing, which would go into effect the beginning of this next year, is, is even greater, greatly reduced. It would be a seasonal average of about two cent credit per kilowatt hour. So that's what they're asking for. I'm, I'm assuming or I'm, I'm guessing that it'll be something somewhat higher after they get through negotiations with, with vendors and the Public Service Commission. And then just to show what a, a local fellow municipality does, Provo City Power, they also provide a, a reduced rate at 6.7 cents, which as you can see is, is just a little bit lower than their rates depending on what time of year. So I want to give a little example here. I can't take credit for this, but this is an example that was used at a solar workshop, net metering workshop sponsored by UAMPS that, that Utah Clean Cities was putting on. And so if you bear with me for a moment to, to show you some cartoons, I'll, I'll walk you through kind of what I'm trying to get at here, but, and how it applies to net metering. So we're going to talk tomatoes for just a few minutes. A grocery store carries tomatoes, as we all know, and normally these are sold by, by the pound, I realize, but humor me and let's just say they're, they're sold by, by dollar amount. So a supermarket or grocery store is going to have a contract with a supplier, a farm, to purchase tomatoes for a certain amount of money. And in this case, let's say those tomatoes are three cents that they purchased. And that grocery store, as we know, they, they have transportation costs to get the tomatoes to the store. They have overhead costs, they have labor, the, the building, cost of doing business. So all that, with all that, they take that three-cent tomato and they turn around and they sell it for about nine cents, let's say, to a homeowner. So for example, for our analogy here, let's say that some homeowners have tomatoes that, that they grow in their own gardens. And at certain times, they have tomatoes in excess than what they're able to use. So for the sake of this example, that they want to sell these tomatoes back to the grocery store to be sold to other customers. So the, the question then that I would ask is, how much should the grocery store pay that local farmer for the locally produced tomato? Well, the argument that, that will be made is that that tomato, anyone who's had a, a garden fresh tomato is probably going to be a little bit higher quality than this three-cent tomato. But it, it's not very likely that that grocer is going to pay the retail rate to that, to that homeowner. So what do tomatoes have to do with, with net metering, you may ask? Very, very kind of similarly, we have generation where, where the power is produced. In this case, it's the cartoon picture of a, a solar farm instead of a, a vegetable farm, right? And currently, our, our best comparable renewable resource that, that we have is our landfill gas plants. And, and those are a great resource because they're on 95% of the time, you know, morning and night, we have energy, good renewable energy provided from those landfills out, out to the, to the west of the valley. And, but that resource, as great as it is, is, is our most expensive resource. We, we pay historically, we're around seven cents a kilowatt hour for that. And then we have the cost of, of transmission, just as the tomatoes are delivered to a grocery store, we, we have the delivery cost. And then instead of a supermarket, we have our local distribution network. And that's made up of substations and power lines and transformers. We have, we also, like a supermarket, we have the cost of doing business and different overhead and whatnot. We have obviously the cost of labor and, and trucks and equipment, et cetera. So we turn around and we sell that power that we purchased for about seven cents for, for nine cents. So getting to the point here of why, why I'm showing you the analogy then is similar to a local farmer that, that is going to sell those tomatoes back to a supermarket. Oh, I, before I, I get ahead of myself here, a, a better, more applicable example now that, that we're going to have in the future, as you may recall, Murray has, we've recently signed a, a power purchase agreement with Navajo Tribal Utility Authority through its, this is going to be a UAMPS project, sponsored project, large-scale solar project called Red Mesa down in the Four Corners area. That's scheduled to be online in, in the summer of 2022, if all goes as planned. And so that, that gives us a better apples-to-apples comparison or tomatoes-to-matoes comparison, if you will. Because that power purchase agreement that we've signed will, will give us the opportunity to purchase power. I believe it's, it's for 20 or 25 years at just around three cents a kilowatt hour. So that gives us a better comparison that, than our, the example with the landfill gas I was giving. But so, so we will be able to purchase that solar energy from large-scale solar project for around three cents and then sell that at the retail rate of nine cents. So going back to our example, similar to, like I was saying, with the local farmers wanting to sell that, those, those excess tomatoes back, we have a similar situation with net metering customers is they're purchasing the power at, at nine cents from us and, and they're generating electricity that, again, as I mentioned, they're first using. But then if they have that electricity in excess, they export that back to the utility grid. So there's a lot of discussion about, again, what, what should that be worth? Should that, should that be sold at the retail rate? What's happening is, is, as Murray continues to provide a one-to-one credit, we believe that that, that there is a, a great value in having that. It, it eliminates the trend, the transmission costs. And we believe that just like a, a local tomato, that that solar is, is a valuable locally produced form of energy. However, many utilities, and this will be something that we have to look at as, as we get more solar customers and as the cost of large-scale solar comes down, many, if not most utilities are moving away from crediting customers at the retail rate. One of those reasons is that, as we mentioned, large-scale solar is becoming more affordable and, and it's, it's much less intermittent than a customer-owned solar, solar generation system. Other things we won't get into this evening, but, but other rate structures are starting to be used. Rate structure called a feed-in tariff for buy-all, sell-all is used, or time of use rates, or even implementing demand charges. So a question that comes up often is, is why do utilities reset the customer's kilowatt hour credit each year? Murray resets in March, I believe. Rocky Mountain Power resets in April. Most utilities will, will reset that credit. And, and to address that, I, I first want to give a shout out to, to Jim and Jennifer Brass. I think most of you know Jim and Jennifer pretty well. Jim installed a, a just under 5 KW rooftop solar system back in the summer of 2015. And from day one, Jim has been kind to, to share his inverter data with our utility. And this on, picture on the right is a screenshot of the web-based program that he's given us access to. And so, so what you're looking at there with the graph is, that's a snapshot of, of a day last week, June 30th. We can, that gives us the opportunity to see down to the, the 15-minute interval, what his, what I would call it, average-sized rooftop solar system in Murray is producing. And so again, thank, thanks to him. I just wanted to publicly thank him before I go into using, sharing some of the data he's provided to us. So to answer the question I posed of why that, why we reset that, this is Jim's rooftop solar system generation from calendar year 2019. So as you can see, starts in, beginning in March as the days get longer and we have less cloudy days through the summer, that the generation peaks through the summer months and then starts to drop off into the winter. And we'll talk about this a little bit more in the following slides, but the reduced generation, obviously, in the, the winters due to shorter amount of, of sun, shorter days and, and, and the weather, obviously. So if we take the same usage and put it a little bit different format, orange is still the same data, but this shows his system generation in comparison to the amount of energy that he is using in, in his home. So you can see here in the, in the springtime, his system actually generates a little bit more than he's able to use. And so as I'll show on the next slide, he gets, he typically will have a kilowatt hour credit start to accrue in the spring and early into the summer. And then this, this big mountain here is, is, is weather, weather-related. It's completely due to his air conditioning load. And then we'll see into the winter months here, what we call this is, it would be his winter peak. And most customers have natural gas furnaces that are going to be powered by, they're going to burn natural gas, but they also have a furnace fan, you know, electricity component. So it's, it's fairly common to see a customer have a winter peak usage as well. So obviously, as the solar declines here, that's not going to cover his, his winter needs. So how that applies to his bill is, we can see here, as I pointed out, the, he'll start to accrue these, these kilowatt hour credits in the, in the spring and then into the summer. And then into the winter months, it's not very common to have, you know, with less generation, it's not very common to have any credits. So the thing I want to point out, a, a lot of people get it kind of excited about the notion of these credits being, being reset, but it's not very typical for customers to have, have these credits reset. Most of them never have them reset. What's common, as, as we pointed out with, with the Brass's system, the credits typically accrue during the summer months and then they're used up during the winter months when solar generation is, is reduced. And really, the reason why most utilities have this reset in place is to incentivize the installation of a properly sized solar energy system that matches the customer's energy needs. So the whole goal of, of having the net metering program is, is for a customer to be able to offset the demand for energy that they have, not necessarily to sell that excess energy back to the utility. So the, the other thing I'll point out is that if a system happens to be improperly sized and, and a customer's regularly seeing those, those credits be reset, they're essentially creating a subsidy that, that really is borne by all the ratepayers. And, and again, is not the goal of the net metering program. That, that essentially means that the customer's system is sized larger than, than what their energy needs are. So that will lead, that leads to another really common question that, that, that we get asked is, is doesn't excess energy exported to the grid from a net metering customer help the utility? Isn't installing the biggest system possible better for the utility? And isn't a net metering customer just giving electricity to the utility when we need it the most? So the, the short answer to those questions is not really and, and no, for the most part. But, but I'm going to show some more data to, to back that up. So this is data from, from Jim's, Jim Brass's system. On a single day, this was from July 22nd, 2019, a sunny day. And you can see the, the, the system starts generating electricity at seven in the morning and then peaks in the early afternoon here and then tapers off as the sun goes down. So that's for, that's the generation for a sunny day. If we use the same scale, this is how much weather affects the generation. And Jim can attest to this. He, he has an app that he can pull out and he can show you as the clouds roll in, how that, how much that affects his, his generation. So this is, again, on the same scale, on a cloudy day from April 15th, you can see how much the, the generation is reduced. And then same scale, this is from a, on a snowy day from January 17th of last year. And as you can see, the generation is, is all but, but gone. And again, what Jim will tell you is often when it snows a lot, the, the snow will come down and, and cover those panels and he may not see a generation for several days until the, the snow melts off. Or some people have a way of cleaning them, but, but most don't. They have to wait till the sun comes back out. So going back to that July 22nd sunny day, the reason why I mention that is that that was the day that Murray City had its, what we call the system peak. And so that is the, the day that Murray City Power customers used the most electricity this past year. So that day was July 22nd. So for that day, this is a graph of the, of Murray City Power's energy usage. And what I'll point out is between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, the, the usage doubles. And, and that's entirely due, you know, weather-related to, to cover air conditioning load through the, the hottest time of the day into the evening. So the, the interesting slide, I think, from this is, is when we put the solar generation up against the, the system peak curve that, that we showed. And I want to point out a few things there. This is a really common misconception. The solar peak occurs at about 2:00 PM, early on in the day, and the system peak occurs at about 5:00 PM. Or in our case, it, it was right at 5:00 PM for that day. So they're not at the same time. And that's a big misconception. A lot of people believe that the hottest time of the day coincides with the time when we use the most electricity or system peak, but they're not exactly the same. So the thing I'll point out there is- So the thing I'll point out there is, is the system peak is still, we're still at 86% of our system peak when the solar drops off to zero. So addressing some of those earlier questions, I'll take a quick drink here. As I mentioned, the, the solar peak is not the same as the system peak. It's much more common for a net metering customer to export electricity to the grid during the, the solar peak hours, which is a little bit earlier than during the system peak. And it's a, as I mentioned, a common misconception that, that customers, net metering customers are, are providing that electricity to the utility during those system peak hours. Really what's most common is that the customers' peak usage they're set themselves that they use coincides with our system peak. So that essentially the customer is using the most electricity they're ever going to use at the same time that all the other customers are using. So it's not very common for that customer to be exporting energy during that time, if that makes sense. The other thing I'll point out is that net metering customers are, are never actually giving energy to the utility for free. As we've already covered, they're credited for electricity exported to the grid. In Murray's case, at a, at the retail rate or one to one. So in summary of this section, that the customer owned solar generation is, is helpful though. It helps reduce the energy demand during system peak hours. So as they generate electricity and offset their energy usage, it, it helps reduce the demand on the entire system up until the point that the sun goes down. However, net metering customers without batteries use just as much electricity as non-net metering customers during evening system peak hours as the sun goes down, as we mentioned. So moving along, another common question, why the 10 KW system size installation cap? As we asked before, isn't bigger, better? And another question, why are there not more net metering customers in Murray? So to talk about that, this is, as a Rocky Mountain Power customer, I'm sharing some personal information here voluntarily, but this was the, my highest bill as a Rocky Mountain Power customer this last year for 1,651 kilowatt hours. It, it was my July bill. And I, I'm sharing this to, to show, to demonstrate something here is my bill for that, that billing period was $229. If I had been on Murray City Power's system to use the same amount of electricity, it would be $57 less or $171. So this is largely due to, due to Rocky Mountain Power's three tiered rate structure that they have. So in Murray, you can, you can purchase 1,000 kilowatt hours of electricity for about $100 at our 9.6 cent rate. On Rocky Mountain Power, for about the same money, $94, that gets you 651 kilowatt hours. So the reason I share that is a, a comment that I get from a, a lot of solar vendors when we're discussing rates is Murray Power is, is too cheap, if there is such a thing. So the reason why they say that is that they're working with potential net metering customers and that they're, they're looking at the, they want the shortest return on investment, you know, possible. And so that payback period is, is really the initial, the cost of the, the solar panels, the initial net investment over the reduced, the avoided cost of paying the electric bill or a higher electric bill. So that's the yearly benefit. So what that essentially means is that a higher power bill is going to mean a shorter payback time. And you'll see this in a lot of the marketing that, that you'll see this on billboards and commercials and whatnot. A lot of that marketing is based on the premise of that, that utilities are increasing the, the rates. And so a lot of people that we work with are surprised to find out that Murray's last electric rate increase was back in 2011. And, and then they're surprised to find out we don't have any scheduled in the near future, right? So one of the reasons possibly that, that we don't have, despite having the one to one credit, we don't have a lot of net metering customers is, is based on this return on investment calculation. So some customers I've helped put, run some numbers, they're seeing the payback period of 20 plus years to, to pay off their solar energy system that they purchased. So because of that, vendors will typically not recommend systems larger than what a customer's energy needs are to really try to minimize that, that payback period as much as possible. One other factor, and, and I know this plays in big to, to people deciding whether or not to, to go solar or not. Up until this past year, the, the Utah state tax credit has been $2,000, now reduced to 1,600. And the federal tax credit has been 30%, that's now reduced to 26%. So we will typically see as, as these tax credits are, are being phased out, we'll see a kind of a surge of, of installations towards the end of the year as customers try to, to get these tax credits. But both of them, as you see here at the bottom, are, are scheduled to expire in the next few years. So it'll be very interesting to see how that affects the, the, the industry in, in the state as a whole, especially if, if Rocky Mountain Power is successful with, with their rate change. It'll just be interesting to see how that affects the number of installations. I realize I'm just about out of time. I just have a couple more quick slides I want to cover, if that's okay.
We have about three minutes.
What's that?
We have about three minutes.
Okay, that's all I need, I think. Thank you. So why talk solar in Hawaii? Well, the, the rates, the electric rates in, in Hawaii are just about three times what they are in the state of Utah. And so because of that, solar has taken off in, in that state. And as of 2015, solar accounted for 50% or 57% of electricity used on the main island of Hawaii. So unfortunately though, because they weren't prepared to deal without amount of electricity, solar energy being installed, 20 to 50% approximately of this solar energy is curtailed, meaning that it's not able to be used. And the reason for that is, is like I talked about earlier, the, the solar energy peak doesn't coincide with the, the system peak. And so when the solar systems are producing more energy than they can use during the middle of the day, they have to, they have to curtail that energy and they're not able to use it. So other issues that they've run into is with the high saturation of solar, it can cause power quality issues, frequency issues, over voltage issues. And so Hawaii's response to that in 2017, they presented a plan to, to help modernize Hawaii's grid. And with some improved grid management, and they now require solar customers to install what are called smart inverters that give the utility access to, to that generation to be able to limit that when needed. So the reason I bring that up is I think it's an interesting test case. We don't have to reinvent the wheel as utilities as, as we look at higher saturations of, of solar. The reason I bring it up is that many utilities in response to solar being installed, they, they have to implement policies really to protect the quality of power on their system. And so they typically do that in two ways. They'll either limit the amount of solar that can be installed per section or feeder, which is essentially just a, a, a section of the city. Or they'll limit, like what Rocky Mountain Power does, they'll, they'll limit the amount of solar that can be installed utility wide. So in Rocky Mountain Power's case, they, they will allow up to 170 megawatts of installed residential solar. So that's first come, first served. And Murray, part of the reason for a 10 KW installation cap, we have not had to implement any of, of those policies to reduce the amount of solar that can be installed. But this is obviously something we're going to have to address. Getting to, to our recommendations here. Our recommendation, based on our most recent third party cost of service analysis, is that we continue the, the one to one credit for now as long as the 10 KW cap stays in place for residential customers. As I mentioned, this really meets the needs of most of the residential customers. We don't really see a, a high demand for residential customers requesting more than that. What we do see is commercial customers requesting larger systems because the 10 KW is really not, not adequate for that. So our recommendation is going to be in the coming months that, that we change that to a much higher number to be able to accommodate our commercial customers' needs. We're currently working with the city attorney's office on a public electric vehicle charging rate that we hope to present to you here in the near future. And, and then we hope to present a revised commercial solar rate in the coming months. So sorry, I went a little bit over, but thank you for your time. If we do have any time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Let's take a few questions. Does anybody have any questions? Anyone? Can I see your faces?
I just wanted to say I had a long list of questions and you answered all of them, which was awesome. Thank you. My one question on that very last thing you said, I love accommodating businesses, so raising that cap. Would there be a way if there was a really large residential property for them to apply for a variance to do a larger one? If it fit their needs, is there ever that option?
Yeah, we, we've had that question posed and I, I think it's something that we could put in place. One of the concerns with that is, as we, we have the one to one rate. As the systems get larger, the potential for that subsidy increases. And so it doesn't make as much sense for the utility to give a one to one credit for a, a larger system. You know, if a residential customer wanted to install 30 KW, unless they were actually able to use that energy. So kind of along the lines of what you're thinking is, what we're thinking for the commercial customers is that we wouldn't just allow, allow any commercial customer to install any amount of solar that they wanted. They would have to provide some data that showed that the, the solar that they wanted to install would meet their energy needs, right? So to your question, maybe it would be a possibility that if a residential customer wanted a variance or something, that they could provide a, a history of their energy usage data to show that that would really just offset their, their energy needs, if that makes sense. Like I said, it, we don't get asked that question a lot, but there are, I, I do realize there are a handful of homes in Murray that are more like the size of a business, right? That 10 KW is probably not going to be adequate for. So we, we certainly could address that if, if there's demand for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Dale?
No, I'm just curious to who, what the commercial uses are. I think that's great that they're moving into that arena.
Your question is, who do we have that, that has installed solar? Commercial wise?
No, you don't really have to tell me. I just think it's interesting. Maybe send an email out.
Right, okay. Happy to do so.
I don't know if you can even do that, but it just, it's interesting to me that they're moving in that direction. It's great.
Great.
Anyone else have a question? All right. I have one last question for you. How are you seeing the changes now with COVID-19 and people being at home more? Who may be on the solar, using solar? How are you seeing those changes? I mean, is the, the solar help, like, are people using solar throughout the day more with their power more?
Blaine, can you help me out with that? I think that pertains more to how energy is being used. And I can't speak to whether or not we're using more electricity as a utility as a whole. I, I would imagine so with more people being at home. That would be more Blaine or Greg's arena of, of, if demand has gone up, I, I'm not sure.
I can answer that. I can answer that, Matt.
Oh, great. Thank you.
It was all, but we don't know exactly what hours of the day these people are using or not using solar. But I can tell you, our June loads, we actually were 2.6% higher. Customers bought 2.6% more energy this year than last year. And I, I can only attribute it to being home more. I mean, we're seeing increases from last year during June. I don't know.
I would think that 5:00 PM like rate would increase earlier on in the day versus later with everybody being home, but it'd be curious to see next year comparison of the next.
The answer is we're, we're using more than we did before because of that.
Right, okay. All right, well, we will move on. Let's see what we have here next on the agenda. We got reports of inter-local boards and commissions. And we're going to go ahead and start off with Blaine. There you go. Thank you.
All right, I'm on two boards. As you know, it's a UAM's board as well as the IPA board. The UAM's board is mainly focusing, of course, on the small modular reactors. That's the brunt of the conversation there. You will have the opportunity in the next month, hopefully to talk about nuclear quite a bit. I gave you a memo last week that introduced you, or at least invited you to several different opportunities. Our, I guess our escape route, you might say, is in middle of September. And then I think that's what the council mayor are most looking at is at what point in time does Murray have to make a decision? And that will be an agenda for the first September, first council meeting in September to, to make a decision on that. But you will have one, two, three, I think three opportunities before then to talk to the UAM's people, the Department of Energy people, new scale floor, UAM's representatives, and I will have a one-on-one with you on the committee, the whole August 25th. And we can talk in depth about that. So that's what the UAM's board is really looking at. We do have one small or one other large scale solar project that we're looking at, but, but I don't think Murray's going to be interested in that one because we've already got some large scale. The IPA project, that's also talking about a new power plant. Of course, the renewed energy, renewed fuel, I guess you could say is we're, we're phasing coal out and we're putting natural gas in. We've talked about that other months. But what's more interesting the past little while is that the Los Angeles City Council has taken a stand on wanting to use hydrogen as a fuel at the Delta Utah plant. And so that's what the, the twist in this whole story is, is that part of the fuel that will be used in the new plant in 2025 will be natural gas at 70% and it'll be hydrogen at 30%. It's a big enough low that there will be a hydrogen manufacturing plant built right next to the Delta plant. And that will provide, of course, the hydrogen to be mixed. And it's really a, a technology that's pretty amazing. That'll be one of the bigger hydrogen manufacturing plants in the world. The goal is to be 100% hydrogen by 2035, I think it is. That's the Los Angeles Department of Energy's goal. And so interesting twist from coal to natural gas to a mixture of natural gas and hydrogen to an all hydrogen plant. We will have ownership in that plant. We will call it back as needed, just like our contract now. With the hydrogen thrown in there, I think this could be a little more expensive than we wanted, but it's a good mix to have. And that's what the, that's what the committee or the IPA board's looking at resolving. Lots more details in there, but that's generally the gist of it.
Sorry, my screen went offline. All right. Thank you so much, Blaine. Thank you for that update. We look forward to hearing from you. Have a great evening. All right. Let's go ahead and move on forward with Mayor Cam to give us an update on councils of government. Thank you. Mayor, unmute yourself. Sorry.
That's a really good idea. Thank you. There's, there's not really a lot to report on COG this time mainly because the COG meetings have been, been held over Zoom and they've been discussing many of the issues that we're all dealing with, a lot of the, the COVID-19 issues and, and those kinds of things. So that's, that's really what COG has, has been focused on. Last meeting, there wasn't even a quorum present. Last meeting, there wasn't even a quorum present. But the good news about COG is, is that this year there were very few committee appointments to be filled because it's in between election years for municipalities. And so there was just a couple of vacancies that were taken care of in January. But there's really not much else to report with COG. The committees are working, working well, but we really have been focused on the COVID and the issues surrounding that. So unless there's questions, I'll just move right into Central Valley.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Central Valley, there's a little bit more to report on. We we are in the midst of about a $250 million upgrade, renovation and expansion of our treatment plant with about 200 million of it being a nutrient removal project. And in fact, there was a groundbreaking held on June 24th for the new biological nutrient removal project. And it was limited just to staff and board members, as well as one entity manager from each entity and some contractors and regulators. But Dr. Erica Gaddis, who is the Director of the Utah Division of Water Quality, spoke at that brief groundbreaking ceremony. And she was very complimentary of Central Valley. She noted that Central Valley is one of the largest facilities in the state, if not the largest facility, and is a leader in meeting the environmental regulations. And I think that's something that we can be proud of, that our our staff at Central Valley has worked very hard on that. A couple of things about what the nutrient removal project. Well, first of all, let me talk about what the processes that are being worked on, worked on over the next two to three years. The Central Valley engine generators are being upgraded to produce more electricity at the plant using the digester gases. So it's similar to what we're doing with the landfill gases out at the landfill, except that Central Valley is a consumer in this case. So we're producing our own electricity using the digester gases. We are working on the minimally treated water that's being used to water the grounds there, which includes the golf course. So that the water is being used to to water that as significant savings over using the culinary water. The headworks rehabilitation, that includes an addition to provide safer work environment as well as better air circulation and filtration of the air in the plant. So some areas that required workers to have PPE, now they're not required to have like self-contained breathing apparatus because of the better air circulation. Also rehabilitation of the large sewer lines coming to the plant from the entity owners. Murray Murray produces about, oh, let's see, it's just under four and a half million gallons per day that we send to Central Valley. And so that's about just under 9% of the of what's taken in at the plant there. So consequently, about 9% or just under that, about 8.75% is what our cost is of the overall project and the overall operation of Central Valley. So the, in a nutshell, the $200 billion capital program in the nutrient removal project is to upgrade aging facilities that are wearing out. Number one, number two, is to improve the processes to meet new state environmental requirements, which are constantly changing. And three is to increase capacity to support the increased population, or I should say the projected population growth of the valley. These upgrades are designed to meet current phosphorus requirements and provide some additional flexibility to meet future possible nitrogen regulations. And at the same time, they're keeping the rates below the national average on what we're paying to have our waste treated. Also, the new construction includes anaerobic basins, aeration basins, a new blower building, secondary clarifiers, primary sludge fermentation, thickening and straining, as well as side stream phosphorus and ammonia treatment, which are all important because they also increase, not increase, decrease odor and reduce pollutants. And they're also working on improved seismic resiliency. So having said all that, we extend an invitation to any council members who would like to set up a time to go on a tour of the facility. That's always available. We're happy to accommodate that. In March, the board approved a contract to Aldra Construction for So right at $50 million, which was about seven and a half million dollars below the engineer's estimate. And part of that is because of the creativity of the staff at Central Valley. They are they're pretty frugal and they're looking for ways to save money all the time. And they actually saved almost $2 million by breaking out part of the bid for switchgear and backup generators and bidding them separate and were able to save almost $2 million. So they're constantly doing that. There was a headworks project contract awarded to D.R. Cordell and Associates for about $215,000. Gerber Construction was awarded a $123,000 contract for biological nutrient removal basins. There's a lot going on, a lot of money being spent, but there's a lot going on over there and upgrading the facility. A couple of other notes. The COVID-19 Action Plan for Central Valley was approved by the board in the March meeting. The June meeting was held in person just a couple of weeks ago. But there was very limited staff and there were no entity managers present. So we used the entire boardroom to spread out and took care of social distancing that way. Let's see, a couple of other things real quick. The earthquake in March caused some damage to the sludge silos and load cells were damaged in one of the three hoppers. The the damage was somewhere, I believe, around $300,000. And with about a $3.9 million deductible on earthquake insurance, none of that was covered. Power was lost to the plant at that time, but the generators did their job in providing the critical areas power. And this is important, there was no discharge or violation of the permit. But one of the things that the staff learned is that they really needed more fuel for the excuse me, more fuel for the generator. So they're looking at purchasing a larger trailer mounted fuel tank that they can move around the plant as needed. Just two more things briefly. The board received the 2019 financial audit report in March. And the auditor, Kettington and Christiansen, found that Central Valley was within state compliance requirements, budgetary compliance, as well as fund balance and Open and Public Meetings Act compliance and Treasurer's Bond compliance. And of course, many of you, not all of you know Justin Zollinger, is the finance director there. So he was making sure that that was all taken care of for us. Finally, the Central Valley sent out a pharmaceutical letter. And I think we sent the copy of this to you in the council communications, but they sent out a letter to over 500 businesses to advise them and remind them of new regulations prohibiting disposal of pharmaceuticals into the sewer system. So that's the, that's the highlights of Central Valley. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone, any questions? Sounds exciting, Mayor.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
Doug, are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor. Sorry, I'm going to introduce you early. We're going to go ahead and move on with Doug Hill. And he's going to give us an update on Valley Emergency Communications Center. Go ahead, Doug.
All right, I will do, start with Salt Lake Valley Emergency Communications Center first and then talk at the end briefly about Metro Fire Agency. It's been about six months since I last reported on VEC. During that time, the executive director retired from VEC as well as their outside legal counsel retired. So VEC has hired a new executive director. His name is Scott Roth. He comes from the New York area, New York, New Jersey area. Brings really a lifetime of experience with 911 call centers as he's worked at very large and very small ones in Texas and Washington State as well. Part of this change exposed some weaknesses in the VEC organization. One of the challenges that VEC was experiencing is that they were they were having to transfer the 911 calls to other agencies because there's not a unified call system in Salt Lake County. In addition, they didn't have sufficient personnel to staff and have timely call answering services. And because they were also using multiple CAD systems at VEC, they the staff was having to learn two systems, which would resulted in longer call take times. So since the first of the year, the VEC has been reorganizing their employees, their their pay changes, their retention plans, a lot of their personnel policies to help retain people and to shorten the call taking time period. This, of course, came with a increase of budget. And all of the agencies Murray included saw a 12% increase in our budget assessment, which you approved as part of our fiscal year 2021 budget last month. It's uncertain as to whether a 12% increase is going to be sufficient. And like most entities, the VEC board will be reviewing this quarterly to see if additional increases are needed this upcoming fiscal year. VEC did not give any of their employees a cost of living adjustment in pay increase this year like the city, but they did fund their step plan. In fact, they moved to a step plan for their employees, similar to what Murray City has done. Regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, that has created some challenges for VEC as well as some opportunities. The opportunities are that they did receive some increased funding from both the federal government and the state government to go towards technology enhancements and retention bonuses for call takers. So VEC has benefited by receiving some additional funding for those items specifically related to COVID-19. Some of the challenges that they've had this year is that they are receiving additional calls now because of the increased pressure on maintaining public order, the riots and civil unrest that has been going on in the valley, as well as agencies asking VEC to track calls that come from groups that are not following the social distancing or the mask orders, some of those kinds of things. So there has been an increase in calls at VEC this year as a result of COVID-19. In the state of Utah did do a legislative audit on VEC recently. And you will probably read soon in the press some takeaways from that audit. The biggest takeaway being is that there's a need to reduce the call time and call, or the call wait time for those people that are calling 911. But as I mentioned earlier, that's one of the things that VEC has already started to address. And then finally, if you were thinking that the fireworks were in excess this year, or in other words, if that's all, you wondered, were there more fireworks going on this year than in previous years? VEC just recently reported to us that they had 175% increase in firework calls on July 4th between 9:30 and 12:30. Last year, they had only 400 calls. This year, they had over 1,100 calls. So yes, there were more fireworks on Saturday night. All right, and then let me just talk about Metro Fire briefly. Metro Fire has spent most of their time redrafting and getting approved the interlocal agreement, which you as a council approved earlier this year. This allowed Metro Fire to start staffing a urban search and rescue task force for the state of Utah, along with some other agencies that are outside of Salt Lake County. And they have also been updating their procurement agreements, allowing fire departments such as Murray City to be able to take advantage of joint purchasing and cost savings by combining these purchase agreements. So that's my report.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Doug. Any questions for Doug? All right, awesome. Let's go ahead and move along with Brenda to review the CARES Act funding agreement with Salt Lake County. And then Brenda, you'll just move forward with the fiscal year 2020, 20, or sorry, 2020, 21 budget amendment CARES Act funding. And you have, let's do it in 10 minutes or less, if you can.
Okay, let's do it in five or less.
Perfect.
Perfect. Both of the items that I have and committee whole are interrelated. You do one, we pretty much have to do the other. So the county received CARES Act grant money that came directly to the county. And they are proposing to divide it, some of it amongst the municipalities. And our proposal is that we will receive $1,456,622. So the resolution before you tonight would be to approve receipt of the CARES Grant funding agreement and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with the county. We will have until October to spend the money and report back to the county on what we've used it for. There's also some continuing reporting, both on social media and various other outlets of what we're using the money for. And so that's the resolution that will be before you. And then attached to that, or the public hearing we will have tonight, is a plan for what to do is to open the budget so that we can actually spend the money as when we determine what we're going to do with it. The Finance Department is currently gathering costs that were incurred since the middle of March, including labor and supplies. And we are collecting ongoing costs that are going on that are related to COVID for possible use of some of this money. We're also working on ways, possible ways to offer individuals and businesses some kind of a grant or some kind of assistance. We haven't quite worked out details or even come up with how we would do that, but it would only be used for people who have been affected by COVID. We cannot use this money to offset our revenue losses. And so then we cannot use it to directly pay our customers' utility bills that have been affected by COVID. utility bills that have been affected by COVID. We're we're working on some ways that we may be able to still help them, but that is not one of the things that we can do for them, at least as I understand it right now. The rules and regulations governing this money changes daily, as far as I can tell. And then the other thing we have to be very careful of, if we do help a business or try and spur economic activity, that we don't use this money for to supplement a business who has used the same expenses to offset other CARES money. And we cannot do that on ourselves. We have gotten four or five different other grants. We have to be very careful that any of these expenses we only use for one of the grants that we have received. So that's some of the the issues or some of the thoughts we have on how to use this $1.4 million. The budget amendment has two things. It says we are going to grant or accept the money and and then we're going to put it all in the general fund right now. And then what it has another sentence that basically allows me if the library has COVID related expenses, water has COVID related expenses, and we determine that we can use some of this funds for those, the different enterprise funds, I can move some of this budget over to them, some of the revenue over to them to offset some of the costs that they have incurred for the COVID crisis that we've been going through. So that is the budget opening and that is what the resolution is. Do we have any questions?
Anyone? No? Okay, thank you, Brenda. You did great with that. You answered my questions for sure. All right, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting and meet. I know we're running behind, Jim. Can we take five minutes?
Or just come back at 6:45?
Yes, that would be great if we can come back at 6:45. For those tuning in, sorry, our first meeting went over. And we're going to start at 6:45 for the city council or the budget meeting and then the city council meeting. Thank you, guys.